With us today are Carson, Eddie Edwards, Carrie Anne Nesmith, and Pamela Pema Reed. Fourth candidate is Kurch Joseph Konzi, who I think might be joining us momentarily. Thank you all for being here, candidates. Much appreciated. Mr. Edwards, let's start with you. You're originally from Kingston, Jamaica, you tell us in your questionnaire. What brought you to Miramar? How long have you lived in Miramar, and why did you decide to run?
All right, so what brought me to Miramar? I first lived in New York for two years. I came to South Florida because of the cold. I just couldn't stand the cold. But what really got me into Miramar, I owned the... Well, I started out as a DJ at a nightclub in Miramar called Stingers. And then we eventually owned the building and started, you know, to develop the property. But we ran into a number of obstacles at the time. This was early, late 90s. And at the time, the commission did not look anything like what the community was looking like. We were getting some pushback. So I decided to get politically active. I was a business owner in Miramar, not a resident at the time. And we got... I ran a campaign for Fitzroy Salesman. He got elected. Then I got involved in the campaign of Winston Barnes, as well as George Pedler. They too got elected. And I've been active in Miramar politics ever since. The only reason why I didn't run at the time was I didn't live in Miramar. And so a couple of years ago, my wife and I, my son now is moved out, grown big man with his own family. And we decided we were gonna scale down. And I said, "Well, if we're gonna move to anywhere, it's gonna be Miramar." And so this now is an opportunity to continue doing the work I have been doing at a different level. A lot of times, sorry, a lot of times people see me when I announce that I was gonna run, and they're like, "What took you so long?" Or they'll be, "It's about time." So it's pretty much because of my work in the community, all these years, people pretty much had expected me to be running.
All right, great. You say in your questionnaire, you're the co-founder of Rhythm's Marketing, a marketing company. Is that, is that company based in Miramar?
Yes, it's based in Miramar.
What kind of work does it do?
Well, we do marketing. Our marketing provides access to Caribbean diaspora markets in North America. We also produce events.
I see. Why did Stingers Nightclub close?
Well, it ran its course. It was there for 25 to 27 years. I mean, the average lifespan of a nightclub is usually five years. We got a couple of lifespans out of it.
Okay, very good. Thanks very much. You say in your questionnaire that what distinguishes you from your opponents is your 30-plus years of community service in the city. Give us what you would consider to be one of the best examples of your community service.
Well, working with a number of organizations, working with moving people to... I worked strongly in the Caribbean immigrant community. And we ran a number of citizens' drives because we wanted to empower them and not just have them become our green card holders. We wanted them to be citizens so that they could vote, motivate people to vote and participate in the process. So I worked along with the Caribbean Bar Association to motivate people and have citizenship drives so that we could get citizens from green card holders to citizens.
Okay. And this is... Thanks for all that information, Eddie. And this is not directly related to the city of Miramar, but it's an obvious question I would ask at this time. Since you say, since you work with green card holders and you work with citizens and non-citizens, if you know, what's the atmosphere, what's the mood like in the city of Miramar about what's happening on the federal level with the proposals to have mass deportations of illegal immigrants?
Well...
Mr. Edwards, one second before you answer that. Mr. Konzi, thank you for being on the call. Can I real quick have your permission to record the conversation? Your microphone's off, sir.
Good afternoon, little one. You absolutely do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Edwards, carry on, sir.
Well, I think, I think the mood right now is of concern, and people are really concerned. I don't, I would, they're concerned. That's what, that's the short answer to the question.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me move to Carrie Anne Nesmith. Carrie Anne, thanks for being here. Tell us about your history and your experience living in the city and why you decided to run.
Yeah, thank you so much, Steve. And it's good to see you again. I know I was here four years ago when I ran for commission seat number one. So I'm running truly because I grew up in Miramar. I've experienced our city's growth and transformation over the past 30 years. Of all my opponents, I'm the only one who actually went to school here. And so I think that gives me a unique perspective to understand where our city has been, where it is currently. And now as a mother, and also a leader of a national nonprofit that impacts almost a million students nationwide through the work that we do, I'm invested in our city's future to ensure that the next generation has everything set up at a foundational level to continue to thrive. The four most important things that I want to accomplish is to have safer neighborhoods throughout our community, ensure inclusion so that everyone from east to west, and also regardless of their background, feels represented, seen, and heard, especially at the local government level. Ensure sustainable growth, which is something I know the mayor has prioritized throughout his term. And then, of course, ensuring that we bolster the local economy by supporting our small businesses and ensuring that everyone has a viable stake thriving in our community. And then, just to answer, I know you didn't directly ask me the question about how people in our community are feeling. As everyone on this call knows and is familiar with, we have a very strong Caribbean population here in Miramar. And so residents feel concerned, but I'll add on top of that. As I'm knocking doors, as I'm speaking to small business owners, they're also feeling like they want their local elected officials to actually make visible what it is that they want to prioritize to ensure that everyone just... They feel like they're seen as a human, right? It's not about what specific Caribbean island you're from or where in the city you're located, but most importantly, that they feel like the people that they've elected from our local commission here in Miramar to our county leaders, to our state and national leaders, that they see the problem and that they're trying to find solutions as best as we can, especially because Miramar has an ICE facility within our city parameters.
Thank you for that answer. You talked about inclusion. I have a question about that. This was an issue last time you ran. Do people in eastern Miramar feel somehow left out, left behind in the city's progress, in your opinion?
In my opinion, yes. And I will also say, Steve, that while that is a critical area that we need to continue to focus on and strategize around, whether it's updating codes and compliance so that there are more wiggle room and parameters for homeowners and businesses to have the same type of newer parameters for codes, such as buildings and things like that. I think also people in central and west Miramar also feel similar, right? Just depending on whose door you're knocking and what the specific topic that comes up is. I think that all residents at the core of it want to ensure that if there is an issue that their HOA or their community groups are coalescing around, that it's actually trickling up to the city elected officials level. Because I think what's happening right now is that there's almost two parallel worlds that are going on. And especially on the east side, while there are infrastructure improvements that have happened over the last few years in different phases, a lot of times people aren't even aware of what's included in phase one versus phase two versus phase three. And I think increasing awareness of that will be critical, as well as making sure that we're also addressing the critical needs on the other sides of our city. While they may be different, there are still things that are top of mind that they just feel are not necessarily being addressed on an ongoing basis.
Tell me some individual or organization who has endorsed your candidacy that you're especially proud of.
Yeah, I'm especially proud of the Miramar Fraternal Order of Police. In addition to that, the mayor, Mayor Wayne Messon, Commissioner Winston Barnes, State Senator Barbara Sharif, State Senator Chevron Jones, State Representative Robin Bartman, as well as Vice Mayor of the City of Coral Springs Nancy Mateo Bowen, and Felicia M. Brunson, the Commissioner in West Park.
All right, thanks.
And Run for Something, sorry, forgot to mention them as well.
Forgot to mention who, please?
Run for Something, a national organization that tries to bolster and mobilize young women and men, as well as those who identify otherwise, to be represented at the local level.
When you ran for office four years ago in District One, you were not successful, correct?
Correct. I like to say, Steve, it's not win or lose, it's win or learn. And I learned a ton in that first race. And it was a three-person race, and we did come in second with almost 30% of the vote. And so I think that that lays a really great foundation for this campaign that I'm running now. There's one thing that you definitely cannot buy from an electorate, which is name recognition. And that has been an amazing thing that I'm seeing. People are very receptive to and excited about this candidacy, my candidacy this time around.
Okay, last question for you in this round, and I'm gonna, I'll move on to Ms. Reed. My question is, win or learn, win or lose, win or learn? It's a very good expression. But what are you doing differently in this race that's gonna make the difference and make you successful?
I think it's a two-pronged answer. So the first thing that's fundamentally different, I know you and Danielle asked right when we hopped on, is this is an open seat. And so the messaging of the campaign is not choose me over this person that you may have voted for before. It's, this is an open seat. It's an opportunity that comes to our city very, very rarely, right? And so I think I proved my viability last time with that campaign that I won, although we did come in second place. And I think the other piece too is just enhancing our grassroots effort. Fundamentally, last time around, it was in the height of the pandemic. And so that limited a lot of outreach that we could do face-to-face with people within our community. And I think that is where we're hitting the ground and being steadfast and making sure that we have presence not just on doors, but at community events. And really being strategic with, like I said, all those folks that I listed who have endorsed me, ensuring that we're building upon the impact that they've had in the community, given their trust in my ability to lead.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Pamela Reed, welcome. Thanks for being here. Anything that all of you can do to distinguish yourselves from each other would help us greatly. We're not asking you to criticize each other. I'm asking you to tell me what sets you apart from the other candidates. So keep that in mind. Ms. Reed, you gave us an answer in the questionnaire in a way that really stood out compared to other candidates. You said, and I quote, "The city is undoubtedly too pro-development, and the consequences are increasingly evident. We're losing a lot of green space in Miramar." Tell us, tell us more about that, and tell us why you feel that way.
My apology. So I am the founder and executive director of Dream Captures for the Soul, which is a holistic wellness organization for children. So one of the things that we're concerned with and we speak to our children about is green space. And Miramar is just building too much, I feel. It's building too much. And what's gonna happen eventually is that there's gonna be mental health issues. And I'm really concerned about that.
Explain how those two relate to each other. What do the mental health issues originate from?
Well, first of all, you're bringing more people into the community, right? So when you're bringing in more people into the community, they're bringing whatever angst, anxieties that they have here. Not to say that there are not mental health issues right now, but I think by building so many and bringing so many people into the city, you're, like Carrie Anne said, you're making a disparity. And there's no trees. We need trees. The things that are happening in this world, hurricanes, the fires in California, it's all because we're just not kind to Mother Nature.
Okay. How long have you lived in Miramar?
I've lived here since 1998. I came here because my mom was sick. I was in grad school as a television production person. And she got sick, so I moved here to take care of my mom. But she didn't last till 60. And I kinda stayed here because my dad was here and my brother was here.
I'm gonna test your memory and your sense of history. When you moved to Miramar in 1998, who was the mayor then?
Uh, what's her name?
Oh, okay. It was a woman, so I can help you a little bit. It was Vicky Cosiano?
No.
Lori Mosley?
Yes.
Lori Mosley?
Mosley, yes.
Not, I'm sad to say, not many people will remember that, but that's fine. In the other races, Ms. Reed, in the other races, we had candidates running who said, and I'm paraphrasing, my colleague Dan Sweeney can help me on this. One candidate said, "One of the great things about Miramar is there's a real cozy sort of sense of community about Miramar, that it still has a kind of a small-town flavor to it." Do you think that's true?
I think it's cozy, but again, there's such disparity on the east side. I've walked door to door, and I've spoken to the people that live on the east side. And they, they're not happy, whether they're complaining about code compliance picking on them, their concern about the way the west side looks versus their side. I mean, there are real disparities happening. And, you know, it's not right.
Give Dan and I one example. You say disparities. What are people on the east side of town not getting that other people are getting?
Well, they feel like it's beautification. I mean, you go out west and it looks very beautiful, but on the east side, it doesn't look so beautiful, you know? Then there's roads that haven't been paved in like 10, 15 years. Streetlights don't work, so people's cars are getting broken into. Those are real disparities, and they have a concern to feel the way they feel. Because on the west side, everything looks beautiful. And I live on the west side.
All right, thank you. Let's, let me switch to Kurch Joseph Konzi. For you, thank you for, don't forget to deactivate or your mute button there so we can hear you.
Good afternoon. Can you all hear me?
Yes, loud and clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve, and thank you then for the invite. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just refer to your predecessor, Pamela Reed. Is she right, Mr. Konzi, that the east side of the city gets the short end of the stick? And you've got neglect, obvious signs of neglect on the east side?
Steve, let me, the short answer is yes. Let me explain what I mean by that. And it's not very often that you get to agree with your opponent, but when they're right, you have to have the courage to say they're right. I have been residing in Miramar for the past 28 years. I came to Miramar after I graduated from undergrad, from FAU. And once I came to the city, there was something special that captured me about Miramar. And I moved in Miramar back around 1996, 97, when I was about to go to law school. I actually lived on the east side of Miramar. My first little house was at Woodskip Townhouses, which is on the east side, around 69, 69 Avenue. And after law school, graduated, and got a family, family growing up. So now I'm on the west side of Miramar. I've been on the west side since 2004. We're in 2020, so 20 years I've been on the west side of Miramar. So I understand that academy that exists between the east side and the west side. And Ms. Reed is correct. There has been a level of neglect that is shown for the east side. Like she said, right now as I'm speaking to you, I am at a residence house because I was campaigning, knocking on doors, speaking to people. And she was gracious enough to allow me to do this so I can take part in this particular forum. So the issues as far as the lack of proper infrastructure, whether it is the pavement of the roads, or another problem that I've seen commonly and heard about from the resident is the lighting, just lighting, you know, where people at 7 o'clock at night, they're afraid of going out because they don't feel safe, they don't feel secure. I think those are issues. Now, I know you've asked questions earlier from Ms. Reed and from Eddie and from Carrie Anne concerning, let's say, for example, the issues that drives, that drive us to run for this particular position. I know Ms. Reed talked about the need for trees. I know people need trees all over, but we gotta be able to balance things. I think even before we get to trees, it's a matter of priorities. People need jobs, good-paying jobs. There is an economy that we believe is gonna do very well for very long. So those are the kind of issues, affordable housing. We just had the, what we call the Live Local Act, and I'm sure you guys have heard about it. That was passed in Florida. It's very important that we understand how it works and how our leaders need to be prepared so it doesn't get out of control. Because when you start having developers coming to your city, and they can go to zones that are, areas that are industrial or commercial, and without having to have a rezoning done and just obtain their permit and start building. Yes, there were some restrictions, and there were some, there were some benefits to it. But like Ms. Reed said, there is what I feel to be a little overdevelopment in Miramar. I live on the, I live on the west side. When you're driving either Red Road, Flamengo, which is where I am, the number of apartments that you're seeing building, you know, building is good, but everything has to be done in moderation. And the worst thing overall is you have a lot of people who actually work in Miramar, but they cannot afford to live in Miramar, and that's a problem.
All right, thank you very much. I've got a follow-up question for you. And this is an issue that's, that's very, very much a dominant issue in Miramar these days. And that's the proposal for a trash-burning incinerator just outside the city limits. And to even further complicate things, it's in another county. It's in Miami-Dade.
That is correct.
Obviously, Miramar butts Miami-Dade County. In your response, Catch, in your response to Kurch, in your response to this question on our questionnaire, you said, you made note of the fact that Mayor Daniella Levine-Cava of Dade County has in effect changed her position significantly, so she no longer supports the airport west location for an incinerator. And you wrote, and I quote, "It is entirely possible that this issue may become moot in the next few months. We will keep up the pressure and hope for the best."
That is correct.
So why is Mayor Daniella Levine-Cava's switch of positions on this thing, why is that so important?
It is important because we have to deal with things as they show. In other words, this issue about the incinerator, we know that the county was supposed to be voting on it recently. And I'm not sure if you were able to follow the county meeting that took place, where she put the entire matter on pause. I'm not saying that it's eliminated completely, but it is on pause. And she gave different reasons why it would need to be on pause, as far as the costs, that the cost that is associated with that project. So as far as I'm concerned, with the current administration that we have now, some of the sources, funding sources that were gonna be used for the construction of the site will need to be, will need to come from the federal government. And as you know, we're in a different, different landscape. The Biden administration is not the Trump administration. So whatever sources of funding that we believe they were going to be able to receive right now, I don't believe that will be the case. So if they're not able to get the source, the funding sources to build this, there is a very good likelihood that it may not come to fruition.
All right. One more quick question for you, and then I'll, I'm gonna turn the question over to my colleague Dan Sweeney. Kurch, tell me an individual or an organization that has endorsed you that you're especially proud of.
Very, very good question. And I think my colleague, my opponent, Ms. Carrie Anne, mentioned that the Fraternal Order of Police endorsed her. I think maybe she probably met from the past, maybe when she ran in the past. I am the one who just received the endorsement of the Fraternal Order of Police. We're still waiting for the firefighters, which is what we come this week. And I have not had the response yet, but the Fraternal Order of Police, they have endorsed me. We have the former US Attorney from the Southern District, referring to Markins LaPointe. I'm sure you probably, you guys probably know who he is. He is one other person endorsing me. And we have the, the city attorney for North Miami, Ken Cazole, you know, and Hans Artino, another former city attorney. So we have a slew of highly regarded individuals who believe in what I've done in the past, what I'm able to do, that I've received the endorsement. And it's not by accident that I got the endorsement of the Fraternal Order of Police because I think that's one of the most, one of the most sought-after endorsements in the city as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, I'm gonna let Carrie Anne respond in just a minute, Carrie Anne, clarify that. But, but you said, I know you're an attorney, Kurch.
I am.
You've got the endorsement of Hans Artino, the attorney for...
He used to be, he used to be city attorney for Sunny Isles. And we also have Jeff Cazole from North Miami.
Mr. Artino is currently the city attorney in the city of Tamarack.
That is correct.
Would you agree with me that Mr. Artino is a highly controversial figure in the city of Tamarack?
Listen, there are other, there are issues. Everybody can have something that, that, that certain people agree with or do not agree with. This is a person who is highly, a high-achieved person. As far as, I'm sure you know, the city of Miami Gardens was incorporated with his, with his support. So yeah, am I going to agree on everything that he does? No. But as far as I'm concerned, he has done enough where if he decides, okay, this person here, as far as I'm concerned, he wants to support me. I'm not gonna say, you know what, I don't want your endorsement because that's not how you operate.
All right, fair enough. Thank you for that answer. Carrie Anne, Carrie, clarify that for us, because I did, I believe you did say you had the endorsement of the FOP. And Mr. Kurch, Mr. Konzi says he has the endorsement of the FOP.
Yeah, I think probably we both need clarification, Mr. Konzi. They were definitely at my campaign kickoff event. I have a letter of support from them as well as a donation. And so I'm happy to connect with them offline and get clarity on that. I'm not sure if they're, you know, giving a letter of support to all the candidates in the race. And if so, then that might be what the misunderstanding is. But they were definitely at my campaign kickoff fundraiser, provided a check as well as a formal letter of support. So I'm happy to clarify that, and I can follow up in an email to you, Steve and Dan.
Okay, yeah. Sorry, clear, Steve. We received, I received the text message from them last week, which, you know, again, all right, I'm not disputing what she said, but I know that they endorsed me.
Okay, all right. Can either one of you give us the name of the contact person at the FOP that we'd wanna talk to about this very point? Either one of you can do that.
We can.
Okay, yep. By the way, this is a good time to mention that, you know, after this interview's over, this isn't the end of anything. We encourage all four of you candidates to contact us with additional information, something you wanna clarify, something you wanna tell us about, something you're concerned that one of your opponents is saying or doing, and so forth and so forth. So, by the way, one more quick question for Carrie Anne Nesmith. We've been talking about endorsements here a little bit. Has Alexandra Davis, the former city commissioner who's now on the county commission, has she endorsed a candidate in this race? Carrie Anne?
I'm unsure if she's endorsed a candidate in this race, but I do not have her endorsement.
Okay, all right. Let me turn the questioning over to my friend, colleague Dan Sweeney.
Hey, I don't wanna harp on the endorsement scene too much. And we'll follow up with the Fraternal Order of Police as far as the discrepancy there. But, but Ms. Nesmith, you rattled off a list of kind of a lot of the movers and shakers in Broward, in Broward politics, as far as, you know, people who are endorsing your campaign. Looking at the financials, two of your opponents have admittedly with some loans raised somewhere north of $40,000. You've not come close to that. How do you explain, generally speaking, in these races, if somebody has all these endorsements from the local, you know, big-wig politicians, the money seems to fall in line? Why is, why is that not happening in this race? Or am I wrong about that?
You're not wrong. I will not speak for the folks that have endorsed me. And, you know, with the money that you said typically comes along with it. Like I mentioned in my opening, Dan, I believe that there is one critical piece that separates me and distinguishes me from my opponents, which is that I do have name recognition, and I have ran for office before. And regardless if I'm first, second, third, or fourth with fundraising in this race, I do believe that that is a significant differentiator. And it allows me to have that competitive advantage as far as the electorate being familiar with me and having to prove myself in such an uphill battle race last time. And we're working steadfast. Like I said, we're running a very grassroots campaign. We are trying to bolster fundraising as much as possible. But I do not think that it is a critical indication of viability solely just based on which position you are with fundraising as it relates to campaign funds.
Understood. Real quick on the, on that Fraternal Order of Police endorsement, were you interviewed by them?
Yes.
Yeah. And Mr. Konzi, you were too?
Absolutely. That was about a week, week and a half ago.
What did you miss, Ms. Reed, Mr. Edwards? Did the FOP reach out to you?
I was thinking, I missed that totally. Did I miss that? I did not get that outreach.
Yeah, neither I.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we've found that to be the case in a lot of other races, the...
And may I come in on that, Dan?
Yes, you may.
The Fraternal Order of Police, I was a prosecutor for many years, and this is a law-and-order type of entity. I'm sure it's not by accident they decided to interview certain people and not others. They've done their homework. It's not like, well, everybody, you know, come. They have done their homework. They decided, you know what, this is the people, we're gonna... They decided, you know what? This is the people we, we, we're gonna interview. So the issue that I have, um, in, in a race like this, um, like you just mentioned from, from Carrie Anne, asking her, well, you have all those movers and shakers, why the money has not falling, falling in place? Me personally, eh, I think if somebody is supporting you, as small as it is, whether it's a dollar, it's a ten dollars, they'll give you something. That, that's the reality. I'm putting a lot of my own, um, resources in this particular race because I believe in what I'm trying to do. Unlike some of my opponents who have major developers, major, major entities backing them, where it's that, I'm not saying they don't have a skin in the game, but a lot of, a lot of money coming from outside of, of the county to come into our elections and to dictate what, what's done in Miramar. So just because, um, you did not receive an invitation says a lot about, you know, the people who've done their homework and, and seeing who they, they want to support and who they, they do not.
Mr. Konzi, when you say you, you, that one of your opponents is watching developer money, I, I would, I would ask that you be specific as to exactly what you're talking about.
Well, listen, um, the, for, for example, I know for certain that, um, one of our candidate here is getting a major backing from, from the Hardymen's. And, and this, it, it's not, it's not a, it's not a secret. So I don't have that kind of backing. I don't have somebody, you know, pouring in a lot of whether it's PAC money or big donations. Whatever that I have, it's people who believe in what I'm trying to do and whatever resources that I have, um, that, that, that will run my campaign. And I'm referring specifically to, to Eddie. Eddie has a lot of money coming to his campaign. And it's not, it's not because, and, and, you know, things are what they are. If, if you raise, let's say a hundred thousand dollars and you have a PAC giving you another, I don't know, hundred, hundred thousand and a little, a, a little risk like this, you have two hundred thousand dollars for a commission seat. That's a lot of money to compete with, but that's the kind of situation that we, that we're dealing with nowadays.
All right. Uh, uh, Mr. Edwards, I will absolutely let you, let, let you respond to that. Uh, um, but yeah, go, go, go ahead.
I've got forty thousand dollars in my campaign account. Um, I continue to fundraise. I've been entrenched in this community for years. I've worked with a number of different people. Like I said, when I decided to run and I threw it out there, a lot of people, their question was, what took you so long? Cause they had expected me to be part of running in, in a, in an election, you know, years. Um, and it shows how connected I am to the people. So. I'm, I'm doing my fundraising and I'm running my campaign. And I'm focused on winning this race. That's what I'm focused on.
And then, then if I may, I mean, I just have a quick question. You can just ask them, are the Hardymen supporting you, backing you financially? That's, that's, that's a fair question.
They're not backing me financially. I know, I know, I know the Hardymen's, they're friends of mine.
Okay.
And they helped me, they helped me with fundraising. Sure, yes.
I got you. So they were, the, the, they've, the, the Hardymen's are, you know, a fairly prominent political dynasty in certain parts of Miami-Dade. Um, they, they've, they've held fundraisers for you, that sort of thing, but have not themselves, nobody in the family.
Dan Sweeney briefly touched on something I wanted to ask Kirch to elaborate on. For those who don't follow your city's politics that closely, why are the Hardymen, why is the Hardymen family so significant politically? Tell us.
Very good question. It's a ma- and, and it's not just in, in Miram- and, and just like Dan just mentioned, they have a, a, a substantial influence in Miami. Now they are in, in Miramar and they are in other parts of, of Broward County as well. And the issue is simple. It's who co- who controls the commission. And if they can have, you know, people in the commission where, when they need issues to be passed, they can rely on those people to pass issues. That's what this is about. It's a matter of counting to three, one, two, three. Can you count on three commissioners? And if you can count on three commissioners, then you're good. Even though you have a commission of five, we don't have a strong mayor in, in the city of Miramar. So the mayor can, you know, his vote and, and his, his, his duties is just one other vote out of the five. So whoever controls three, I don't care what anybody says, controls the commission. And I know some people will, will beg to differ, but that's the reality.
Kirch, uh, um, you, you, you mentioned the, the city attorney in, uh, in Tamarack. Is, i- is, is anybody, uh, uh, on the Tamarack City Commission supporting your campaign?
No, not at all. Not, uh, the, the, the one person that I mentioned is, is the Hans Artinot. And is, is, it was the city attorney for city of sunny, of sunny Isles.
Right.
And, 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 you know, whoever that I, that I told you, those are the people that I know of, if somebody is supporting me, did, did not tell me about it? I don't know.
I'm sure you would love to know. Yeah.
I'm sure.
Okay, uh, uh, fair enough. I wanna, you know, move on from, from, from endorsements and, and financials to like, you know, actual, actual issues that voters are going to think about here. Um, along with the, uh, the incinerator that we, that, uh, we've kind of already touched on a little bit. Um, one, one issue that is a, a constant ongoing one, particularly in the west side of the city, is a concern over blasting from a rock mine, which again is south of the city and in Dade County. Um, this has been an issue for a long time. And from what I understand, people on the west side of the city still complain about it and still like something done about it. Um, but the city itself doesn't seem like it can actually really do a lot other than mitigate. Uh, Ms. Reed, we haven't heard from you in a second. Why, why don't we start with you? What can this, what can the city do, if anything, at this point, uh, regarding blasting at the, the rock mine south of, south of west Miramar?
I don't think anything can be done. Um, I have cracked tiles on my floor that I, that I've just put down. I have cracked foundations, so I really don't think anything can be done. I've complained, uh, and have gotten no results.
Certainly, you're, you're not the first person I've, I've heard say almost those exact words. But, uh, Ms. Nesbitt, do you have a, a, any other take on that? Is this something that, that Tallahassee has to take up? Uh, what, what's the, what's the solution here, if there is one?
Yeah, I, I know from speaking with residents, I also have family members who live out on the west side, that it is something that has been ongoing and there have been many estate representatives who have been elected, kind of running on, I'm going to mitigate this and fix it. And unfortunately, it's just, it's been a roadblock for a very long time. However, I do think that at the Miramar level, that there could be something that can be done to help support homeowners, um, whether if it's low interest loans that we can help foster so that they can fix things and not have to dip into savings or figuring out, um, how to provide some grant dollars. And even though it might not be enough to cover the cost of every single repair for every single resident impacted, even a small portion of that can go a long way for homeowners. And so I think at a bare minimum, at the local level as a city commissioner, there are some programs and initiatives that we could maybe even partner with local nonprofits and organizations that do have those types of programs and initiatives to just help bolster and expand it as much as we possibly can. And while it, it might seem like a moot fight, still working steadfast, you know, um, being a pest and, you know, rallying and, and trying to make visible that as a commission, we stand together with our residents to try and get some reprieve from this long lasting issue that hasn't been impacting our community.
Uh, uh, Mr. Edwards, anything to add to that?
Um, no, uh, what, what I would say, just to add, because like Carrie Anne says, the city has really exhausted everything possible. I know Mayor Messom and the commission really went trying to do it because that has been something that has been an issue for years upon years. And the residents there have been very vocal as well. And the city has tried their very best to see how best they could, you know, find some solutions there. And they've run into roadblocks. Um, I think over time, and, and again, you know, trying to take this to the federal level, it, 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 we probably would have to wait for the right opportunity and the right time.
Uh, Dan, can I ask a follow up question if I can?
Shoot.
My question is for Eddie Edwards as well. Uh, Eddie, would you say that Mayor Wayne Messom is a pretty widely respected figure in the community?
Oh, sure, yes.
Well liked, popular?
I would say so, yes.
Tell us why you think he'd be supporting your opponent, Carrie Anne Nesbitt.
Um, I think he, and, and Kirch said it, he's looking to see how he gets three votes on the commission.
Okay, so it's, it wouldn't be based on qualifications or merit, it's strictly to be able to count to three. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Carrie Anne, do you agree with that?
I disagree. I.
Uh, my question, I'll let you speak, Pam, but I wanna ask Carrie Anne first.
I completely disagree. Um, I think that the mayor, uh, has done a ton of research, does not throw his name behind candidates on, on a regular basis. He does not, he has not publicly endorsed any one candidate for Miramar Commission in quite some time. And so again, coupled with my learnings from that last campaign, along with my qualifications and my proven tangible impact that I've had here in the community that I've called home since I've been a very young child, um, is what has led him to endorse me, not simply to hold a vote, uh, tally, but because of my qualifications and merit.
Okay, yes, all right. And Pam, I'm gonna call on you in just a second here. Uh, so turn your mic on, uh, Pamela. Uh, but, but, um, I, I'll stand corrected, but to the best of my knowledge, cause we've already interviewed the other candidates in the other races. If another candidate in another race had Wayne Messom's endorsement, they'd be screaming from the rooftops about it. And they're not. So I don't think Messom has endorsed a candidate in the other two races, but he has endorsed in this race. So Pam Reed, what do you wanna say?
No, I think he's endorsed, um, Carrie Anne because she is young and she will bring new ideas. But like myself, I have spent two decades of, of running my own business. I have, uh, concurrently run a nonprofit where I founded, um, and have been running. I know how to look at budgets. I know how to digest budgets. I know how to make them work. And I know how to, to, to bring in government grants. But I think that he's endorsed her because she's young and she's vibrant and I get it.
Dan?
Okay, hold on just one second. Um, why would? I'm a little bit, uh, curious about something. Why would Messom be endorsing? I'm, I'm not saying, I, I accept it at face value, but why would Messom be endorsing a candidate because of her youth? Why would that be a big factor?
Because new ideas.
All right. Uh, Pamela Reed, I'm gonna stay with you for thirty seconds here. And, uh, you know,
Excuse me.
Uh, Dan Sweeney and I and other people in journalism, we, we, we like to put people on the spot sometimes, you know? And I say that not in a negative way, but in a nice way. So here's my question to you. Pam, if you were, if you were not running in this race, if you were not a candidate, which of these other three candidates would you vote for?
Carrie Anne.
Okay. Kirch, the same question for you. If life had turned and twisted differently for you and you weren't running in this race, but you were voting, who'd you be, who would you be voting for?
Probably voting for Ms. Reed, even though, um, the, the issues, and, and it's based on principle. It's not, I know she has the resources that I have and Eddie may have and maybe Carrie Anne has. Um, she doesn't have it, but I think in, in the long run, um, from a, a principle standpoint, um, I'll probably be more aligned with her than anybody else. And I know that Dan was asking questions. I, I would like to chime in earlier. So whenever that should get back, I would, I would love to have opportunity to, to respond to your questions as well, Dan.
Okay, I, I just wanna go to Eddie Edwards for a moment. Eddie, I wanna, don't wanna leave you out of the conversation. Uh, I hope you, I hope you'll break the tie here, Eddie. If you weren't running in this race, which of the other three candidates would you vote for?
Uh, your, your microphone's off, Eddie.
Yeah. So I would, I would say this, um, I would say this, simply because of her qualifications and, um, her tenacity. I would, I would, I would, I would say, Pam.
All right. Those are very interesting answers. Uh, Kirch, Dan, I actually couldn't hear it, but Kirch wanted to cycle back and answer about something you asked about earlier, and I don't remember what it was.
It was about the, the blasting on, on the west side.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry you didn't get a chance to answer that. Please go ahead.
I did not. Everybody did but me. And I'm trying to get some equal time here.
But fire away.
No problem. Here is the issue, Dan. I know you asked this question and I believe, um, when that question was asked of Pam and she said, I don't think anything can be done, uh, as, as far as the, the blasting on the west side. And I think when you came to Eddie, he talked about the fact that he believes, um, the city has exhausted everything and this maybe need to be done at a federal level. I can, I could not disagree more. We cannot say that I don't think anything can be done. Though, if there is a problem, usually there, there, there will be some kind of a solution to a problem. So we just have to find the solution. I've had colleagues of mine who, who reside on the west side. Their pools have cracked, their foundations have, have, have had problems. And they tried to sue, and every time they tried to sue, he was like, the, the problem that they run into, they run into an immunity problem. There, there are laws that are passed that actually protect the, 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 the entities doing the blasting. So what I propose can be done. A, this is not a federal question. There is no federal question here. This is something that needs to be done at the state level in Tallahassee. We are a city. We have lobbyists that we pay for on a regular basis. This is something that we need to deal with from a lobbying standpoint, where we can change the law. If, if there is a damage done by that particular entity to a homeowner's, um, property, that entity needs to be responsible. But we need to change the law first, and the way we do it is by lobbying, going to Tallahassee and make sure that those, those particular homeowners on the west side, they, they can get some relief when the damage is done due to no fault of their own, and it's the entity that has done it. And of course, like I said before, there is, I'm not saying it's an absolute solution, but that is, that, that, that is a way to address this versus throwing our hands up, saying nothing can be done. We've exhausted everything. This is a federal question. I, I, I absolutely disagree.
Okay, thank you. Steve, did you have, uh, did you have further questions? Your, uh, your microphone's off.
I do, and I wanna go around the horn here briefly, and I'll start with you, Kirch. You brought, you brought it up. This is mind boggling to me. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen. In the 2024 legislative session, the city of Miramar, a city of a hundred and forty thousand people, employed fourteen paid lobbyists in Tallahassee. Fourteen. That's outrageous, in my opinion.
I agree. I agree. And that's not, a- a- and Steve, that is, that is among the reason I, I don't think I answered that question. I am an attorney by profession. I've been an attorney for twenty eight years. I've been, well, for twenty five years. I've been a resident of Miramar for twenty eight years. My office is in Miramar. My employees are in Miramar. My kids were born in Miramar and raised in Miramar. So I have a vested interest in this city. I am tired of the way that the city spends our money. If, if, let's say, for example, the commission was spending its own money, it will be very careful how it spends the money. But that's one issue that I have with politicians, when they're spending other people's money, taxpayers' money, they think they can just throw it away. They're like, anyway, they see fit. And I'm tired of complaining and that's why I'm getting involved. Quick example, it's okay. Let's say, for example, for Martin Luther King, you have a parade. For Thanksgiving, you have a parade. For, for Christmas, that's fine. But in the city of Miramar, we're pretty mu- pretty much having a party almost every other month. And, and for many of those parties, we are running at a deficit. Let's say, for example, we spend a hundred thousand dollars for the party, we bring in seventy thousand dollars. You have a thirty thousand dollar deficit. I would rather see that money be used differently. Let's say, for example, complement the school system by putting tutoring, tutoring programs for, for kids. Miramar High School, it's not a failing high school, but the level of the city we run, you go to Pinecrest, you go to the public school system, you see the level that, that the public school is performing versus the city. Same thing in Weston. You cannot say the same thing for Miramar. I'm not saying the school issue is, is, is simply a Miramar issue. It's a countywide issue. But at the same time, there are things the city can do to supplement what the county is doing. So our dollar, that tax dollars can be better used than throwing parties and putting sculptures, uh, and, and, and things, and, and trust me, I'm fed up.
All right. Okay, okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a quick question of Carrie Anne Nesbitt, then I'll turn the questioning back over to you, Dan. Okay. Uh, Carrie Anne, um, you know, Mr. Kirch just said, I'm tired of how the city spends our money. And, and Carrie Anne, you have the endorsement of the sitting mayor, Wayne Messom, who has a lot to say about how the city of Miramar spends its money. I mean, I would say that Mr. Ma- Mayor Messom is part of the status quo in Miramar. And so do you have any fault to find with the way the city spends its money or, or, or do you think the city is spending its money wisely?
I, I, so I think Mayor Messom is definitely a leader that has been in our community for quite some time. But similar to what he said publicly at many commission meetings and in different areas that he's been in the community, he doesn't necessarily agree with every single decision. Going back to what Mr. Konzi said about the three, two vote, there are often times when the mayor is descending vote, right? Not agreeing with some of the things such as increasing city commissioner salaries, right? There are many things that go before the dais that he has fundamentally been against, including increases to our expenditures. So I'll just state that, um, on the record. I agree with a lot of the sentiments that my opponent just mentioned. One of the things that I've been, um, campaigning on and, and trying to champion is if we just decrease our spending on events throughout our community by just five percent, we'll free up a significant amount of capital to do some of those initiatives and programs. we'll free up a significant amount of capital to do some of those initiatives and programs, like I mentioned, the funds for the blasting that's impacting residents out west, ensuring that we have a grant or different initiatives for our seniors that are on fixed income, for example. And increasing just ability, like I I'm raising a young family here in in the the community that I've called home for so long. And daycare subsidies are something that would be widely beneficial, especially because the averages of a Miramar resident is mid 30s. And so I think we there are many opportunities from evaluating our city structure to assessing like what that spending looks like. I know one of the questions you all mentioned was about P cards, right? And so there are so many instances where our dollars are being spent on lawsuits, they're being spent on inflated salaries, they're being spent on things such as being in the red with events and things like that. And and it's critical that we address it because we experienced not too long ago when the city was considering layoffs, right? Because of the pandemic and having a limited number of reserves. And the first thing that I would want to champion in the first year, if elected as commissioner, is trying to increase the percentage of our annual budget that is set aside for reserves. I think it was less than 2% when I saw the fiscal year 25 budget get approved for our city. And that's just not okay. It is. It is too risky. And we need to really reassess what our spending looks like and prioritize fiscal responsibility so that we are laying a foundation that is pandemic or insert any other economic turmoil proof so that we are not, you know, running the risk of our city having a lot of downfalls that will then ripple and impact every single community member, every single business that's in our community.
You know, it's funny, this has not been an issue in any other city in which we have interviewed, and yet this is the second out of three races in Miramar, you know, the Miramar races that we've done today, in which people have brought up the constant stream of parties that the city pays for. Do the rest of the candidates agree that the the budget, the city budget for for what the Romans used to call bread and circuses is a it is a little little out of control? Ms. Reed, what do you think? And I get want to get to you too, Mr. Edwards.
It is absolutely out of control. Like Carrie Anne said, we can utilize those funds in our schools. We can utilize those. Do you know that at Walmart, there are people living in their cars, that there are seniors living in their cars? And yet we can have parties every day? It is absolutely not all right.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. What what do you think?
No, I agree. I think there's a lot of overspending in that particular area. And that's an area that if or when elected, I think we should really look at how we divert some of those funds to more social services for sure. Yes.
Okay, we started this whole conversation with with Kurtch Kanzi, and I want to come back to you. The budget of Miramar for fiscal year 2025 is around $446 million. The budget for the cultural affairs division is out of that around $5 million. Now, Carrie Anne Nesbitt mentioned, if we just set aside 5% of the of the money we're spending on all this hoopla, then, you know, we could actually do, you know, do so do something better for the community. But 5% of $5 million, that's like a quarter million dollars out of a $446 million budget. So do you really think that cuts to the $5 billion cultural affairs budget are really going to do the city a whole lot of good when it's got a $446 million budget?
Then if it's if the money is coming from your pocket, if it's a dot, even even if it's a dollar, it makes a difference. I'm not saying that on the grand scheme of things, it's going to make a huge difference, but let me tell you, let's say, for example, it's a quarter of like $250,000. Do you know how much you can do? Let's say, for example, putting a tutoring program for kids after 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 care program for kids? And we we we're in a city where the kids need those kind of programs. You follow? So it's not like we we live in Pancres and 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 the parents can afford to to give private tutoring to their kids or or something similar in Weston. That's not what we have. We have kids who can use those actual resources. A quarter of a million dollars can do a lot for what we're facing now than zero. So if you if you were asking, if you were to ask me this question over again, I will always take a quarter of a million dollars over zero anytime and twice on Sundays.
Ms. Nesbitt, I I kind of I kind of use your words against you there in in phrasing the question to Mr. Kanzi. So I wanted to give you a chance to respond to that, too. Do you do you think the given the cultural affairs budget is a, you know, a fairly slim percentage of the overall city budget, that that looking there for cuts is going to to, you know, result in substantial savings? And and where else might you look in the budget to try to free up funds for things like what Mr. Kanzi said, an after school program or some of the stuff that you mentioned?
Yeah, and and I think definitely the cultural affairs budget is is one aspect of it. But I also know that each commissioner has a budget to do community engagement, and oftentimes, community engagement is in the form of an event, right? And so it's not just that line item that I'm referring to, but the conglomerate of all the funds that are used and expended for events throughout our community. So just to clarify, that's what my mindset is. A quarter million is still significant, especially when you're talking about potentially giving $100 to someone to pay to support paying daycare or to support paying a water bill, right? But it is it is a conglomerate that I'm talking about. When you look at all of the dollars that are put towards community outreach events, and I'm not to be clear, I'm not an advocate for completely eradicating them. They are critical, especially given how diverse our community is and and how we're continuing to grow. So I just want to make sure that I state that very loudly. But it is about the the ratio, right? There's a reason why many people from different cities come to Miramar for our events because we always have them, right? And when you look at a comparable, even our sister city of Pembroke Pines, it is not as much as we have. And so, again, cul- cultural affairs coupled with all the other different department budgets that are used to put on various different community events and outreach programs. Let's just let's shave it off slightly, right? Because I don't think that if you presented it to the electorate, which at the end of the day, these are ideas and a platform that we're each running on and presenting to the community. But I think if you were to present the average voter in Miramar with that option, let's shave a little bit here to increase over here, they would all agree. Absolutely. Let's do that for the betterment of our entire community.
Okay, yeah. And and you know, the the community outreach funds for individual city commissioners is is something that I hadn't considered and is a really good point. It's it's something that I believe the editorial board in other cities has referred to as a slush fund. I don't know if political candidates would quite use those words, but we will. So so, yeah, that's that. I mean, that's a good point. My follow up question to you was, what other areas of the budget do you think maybe need to be tightened to free up funds elsewhere other than community affairs and these sort of, you know, parties every weekend kind of thing? Is there any other area of the budget where you see that needs a like a fine toothed comb?
I think one of the things that I I obviously wouldn't want to impact our grant programs, our first responder programs, like, you know, the firefighters, the police department. I do think that there is something with regard to just looking holistically at our expenditures. As a community, I would want to, given my work day to day, I support school districts and other nonprofits with compensation system design. And so one of the things that I think would be critical would be to do a local benchmark, right, to assess the competitiveness of our salaries holistically as a city, ensuring that we are market on market with the salaries that we offer, making sure that there are no disparities with any one group being significantly underpaid and another group being significantly overpaid, again, with the comparison of market averages, especially when you look at similarly sized cities. And so that would be one thing is just to reassess our expenditures, not necessarily looking to a specific department or line item, but potentially personnel, right? I know that we've grown, our budget has increased 17% compared to just last fiscal year, right? And a lot of that is employing more people to keep up with our population growth. But is that increase actually on par with our population growth, or have we grown a little bit too steadfast, a little bit too quickly? And just really making sure that we're being as efficient and effective and ensuring that all of our expenditures are in line with what our city needs and not just an opinion of one person who's saying like, let's increase this department because of X reason. And again, those are the types of decisions I think should be made visible to our community, right? There should be outreach efforts. There should be, hey, here's an option. If you had to pick, if you had a seat at the table to make this decision, what would you decide? And those are areas that, again, I think if we increase accountability and transparency with our budget, people would start to understand and it would demystify where our taxes are going and how it's being spent.
Okay, fair enough. Mr. Edwards, I want to ask you the same question, the 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 second part of that question, which is stipulating that, you know, maybe the 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 city spends too much from its various events and entertainment budgets to and that should be cut back. Where else do you see in the budget where you would like to, you know, where where is there is there places where you would rein in spending? Is there places where you you think the city needs to spend more? Somebody earlier mentioned a lot of cars being broken into. Does the city need more in public safety? Or or less in other areas? What's your thoughts?
So and Carrie Anne really spoke to this, and and I agree with her. I think there needs to be a holistic look at the budget. And I think when you begin to shave a little from this department, a little from that department, a little from that department, you will end up with tremendous savings in 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 the long run, you know. Not being in office and sitting there and getting the full scope of everything, you know, hearing from the residents, the first thing that everyone that speaks to you about is that water bill, right? Everybody complains about their water bill. And I looked at it and technically, it's really not a water bill, right? It's a bunch of different services that they put in that bill. But the the residents are complaining that that's too high. But going back to the budget, I think we definitely need to look at the budget, streamline the budget, see how best we can shave various departments and then transfer some of those savings into other areas. The events get highlighted because everybody sees these events. And certainly, there are too many events, but there are things that we're not seeing that also we could make savings on.
Okay, fair enough. Ms. Reed, same same question to you. How would you change the budget if you could?
First of all, each department should be audited.
Is that not happening at all right now?
Not in the way that I'm thinking. I think all of those Visa cards that people are allowed to spend, it should be audited. I think also, as an executive recruiter, I place senior level executives throughout, you know, all over the world. A lot of people that live in Miramar, not that work in Miramar are not qualified for those positions. So I would also audit. You're looking at me strangely, but I would also audit to make sure that these people that are in the positions are not there just because they're family members. Do you understand what I'm saying? That they're actually qualified, like they actually have a master's degree in something. Not that that's a prerequisite, but if they say that's that's the that's the necessary qualifications for that position, don't put a family member in that position. Put the right person in that position.
Do you think that's a a common problem to Miramar more so than other cities right now? That sort of that level of nepotism in local government?
Absolutely.
Yes?
Absolutely.
Mr. Kanzi, I wanted to to ask you the same question, then I'll unless Steve had more questions, I'll I'll start to to wrap up the conversation. If you could change the budget, you know, take away some here, add some there, what exactly would you do?
And I don't think that I would often say this, but I tend to agree with Eddie in regard to put everything on the table with two exceptions that I will that that I will carve. And I'm going to tell you why I will carve those two exceptions. And I'm going to explain to you my position concerning that. I will be very careful in not cutting down on the first responders as far as, because I know we have issues, whether it is cars that are getting broken down, broken down or or kids breaking into cars and all that. That's that that has been a major problem, which tells us that we can always use more resources in our law enforcement department. And there is one thing that I would like to see in Miramar as well. I believe that in the budget for 2025 or 2024, I don't remember which one, they allocated funds for one person to deal with mental health issues for for the first responders, more particularly for the for the police department. I had a meeting with the firefighters recently. That's one thing that they're asking for, that they think they will need some kind of assistance in that regard. So instead of having one person, why not having two or depending on on the demand, maybe three? And it's not something that costs a lot of money. So with so with 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 the law enforcement, I'm not saying that you should have everything, you know, not having a check and balance. You should have a way to add it like like Ms. Reed says, so we don't have issues like the P card that that we've had in the past, so that we can reduce the level of waste where they exist. But I will I will do everything that I can to be certain that they have the resources that they need. The firefighters, the same. After this, everything else, put them on the table like me, like Eddie said. If we have to, you know, we can slash 5% here, 3% there, 10% there, so be it. Because when you when you when you think about it, this is my money, all the other taxpayers' money that we're dealing with. So if if I were in my house, I'm having a budget and I know that I'm having some financial difficulties, I'm gonna I'm gonna slash everywhere that I can to be certain that I stay with my budget. But when those commissioners, they're spending money, they're spending taxpayers' money, it seems like, you know, it it's not a big deal and that I'm tired of.
Okay, fair enough. Steve, did you have any further questions? Otherwise, I'll let everybody have a a turn to, you know.
Yeah, I think we're we're up against a time crunch here, but I've got one very quick for one very specific question. I'll start with Carrie Anne Nesbitt. Carrie, Carrie Anne. Did the current Miramar City Commission vote to increase their own salaries?
So the current commission, yes, they voted to increase their salaries a couple of years ago. And that was, I believe it was a 3-2 vote. So it was Mayor Wayne Messam and Commissioner Winston Barnes did not vote for it. And at that time, Commissioner Davis Chambers and Colburn did vote to increase their salary.
Okay. How would you have voted?
I would have voted against the increase. I think, again, given exactly what we just talked about, we're trying to balance the budget and decrease as many expenditures as possible. I fundamentally believe that while being an elected official is a full time job, right? It is something that you should be dedicated to and you should not sign up for it if you are not willing to serve, right? Serving is not a nine to five type of job. But I do believe that you are being paid to to work part time, which means that you wish you should be willing to sacrifice and receive a pay that is on par with other communities. And Miramar has one of the highest paying commission salaries when you look locally to our left, to our right, to our north, to our south. And so I would I would have voted against the increase.
Okay, that's I think we're out of time and that's all I had time for, Dan. Sorry. That's it.
You're on mute, Dan.
You're muted.
You're on mute, Daniel.
Sorry. I'll give everybody one minute to to, you know, kind of, if you were, you know, talking to a voter, trying to get their vote, what's your one minute elevator pitch to, you know, to convince them to to cast their vote for you? And I I really do want to keep it to a minute because we are well over our hour here. So let's do this in in reverse alphabetical order. Ms. Reed, we'll start with you.
Okay, as commissioner, I will listen closely to the needs of our community and I will work collectively with our residents, community leaders and local organizations. I will work with the small business owners and give them the resources that is necessary. I will work with our seniors and our children because those are the most important people in my in my heart. And I'm committed to to making Miramar a safe place for everyone to live.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Nesbitt, go ahead.
Yeah, I, as I've been saying, I'm a third generation Miramar resident. I grew up in here. I grew up in the city of Miramar. I went to school here. I have proven track record of impacting our community from investing in our youth, serving as vice chair of the City of Miramar Education Advisory Board to president of my homeowners association, expanding senior outreach programs. I have a proven track record in my professional career with fiscal responsibility and my goal is to make our neighborhoods continue to make them safe, prioritize sustainable growth, so we protect our environment by fighting back for the incinerator and most importantly, inclusion. So everyone feels respected, represented and heard, whether you're a citizen or not, whether you're a new resident or a longtime resident, you're east, you're west, regardless of your socioeconomic status or race or ethnicity, I want Miramar to be a place where you can thrive and and live your life.
Thank you very much. Mr. Edwards?
Okay. What sets me apart is I'm gonna just continue doing the work that I've been doing in the community as a commissioner. I have the ability to work and build bridges. I have a great relationship with Mayor Messam, with Mayor Vice, with Commissioner Colburn, with Commissioner Chambers, even the other two candidates in seat number three. I have a good relationship with any one of those who win. And I think I'd be able to build bridges and find coalition on the commission to continue growing our city, this beautiful city of Miramar.
Thank you. Mr. K- Thank you. Uh, Mr. Konzi, go ahead and, and wrap this up.
You almost forgot me again, Daniel.
Your name starts with a C. It's not my name.
So good. No, seriously. Miramar is a beautiful city. I'm not going to stand before the voters and tell them that the sky is falling. That's not true. Uh, are we doing okay as a city? Yes, we're doing okay. But can we do better? Absolutely, we can do better. One thing that I can promise, the residents of Miramar, when I, when I'm in there as, as your commissioner, I'm going to be certain that I'll hold the commission to be fiscally responsible. When they're spending your money, your tax money, I'm going to be certain that every dollar is properly accounted for. And if the money is not properly spent, I'm going to make sure that my, my voice is heard, and I will make sure as well that you know how your tax money has been, i- 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 has been used. And lastly, change is good sometimes. We've had this status quo for way too long, and I think it's about time to mix things up a little, bring some new blood and get some new ideas so we can move the city forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, and thanks to all for you for actually keeping that under a minute. Uh, I couldn't say the same in a lot of other races. Uh, so I, I, I appreciate your time, and uh, please do follow up by email with any uh, any statements that you have that we, you know, on subjects that we didn't get into. Um, really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.